You guys ready? You guys excited?
Yeah. You guys are awesome.
All right.
Here we go. Guys, professional. Let's start it now.
How are you feeling, Evelyn?
All right.
How are you, Elijah?
I feel nervous.
You feel nervous? You're gonna do your thing. How about you, Peyton?
Huh?
How are you doing?
Good.
You awake?
Sure.
Okay. Mohammed, how about you?
Good.
You gonna knock it out of them? Okay. Kennedy, what about you? How you doing? This is my pregame interview. How you doing?
Good.
Good. How about you, Elijah?
Good.
You gonna do all right? How are you doing? What are the people about to be in store for?
A lot of inspiration.
A lot of inspiration? What are they about to get? What are they about to get from you?
Some passion.
Some passion?
Confidence.
All right.
So if I'm speaking and Evelyn has last part, do we all get offstage after that? After the "I love myself, I believe in myself"? After that, that's when you leave.
You got this. You got it.
We've had a lot of changes thrown at them in the last hour and a half. Man, they're amazing. They've got this.
I'm excited, but I'm also really nervous.
Two minutes, Pete.
And I am just thinking, excited thinking about the possibilities of how many people these kids are going to empower here in just a few minutes.
We had a situation this morning that took me away for a little while, that I came bolting down through the campus.
Even today, yesterday, in 2021, there is still segregation. The 2021 Belmont Track Scholars Bring to Life This Is the Dream by Diane Z. Shore, Jessica Alexander, and illustrated by James Ransome.
This is the dream.
Our nation was founded on the belief that all men are created equal.
I'm here to represent a struggle that has gone on for 300 or more years.
However young you are, you have a responsibility to seek to make your nation a better nation in which to live.
We are the diners who have sat and who have waited at white, white-only counters ignoring the hate.
Honestly, I just felt like on a cry. I was so pleased, so happy, so emotional.
We, we embrace our power.
I introduce to you Reverend Dr. Martin Luther King Jr.
I remember that Monday morning that I was able to be in court chief defender.
A lot of people don't think that younger kids are capable of understanding everything that's going on in the world right now.
I want you, yes, you, to take steps with me for justice for Breonna Taylor. I, I walk together, taking 2.23 miles of steps of kindness, honoring Aman Arbery.
This is like living proof that they do and that they're acting in it as well.
We must walk together for eight minutes and 46 seconds for equality for George Floyd.
So many people think, oh, they're so young, they can't understand this, but they do. They live it from their hearts and souls. They brought it. They shined. They empowered. They shared their voices. And they delivered the inspiration that the world needs.
Let us be sure our hands are clean in this struggle. Let us never fight with falsehood or violence. Hate, malice, but always fight with love.
We, we will be able to live with people as their brothers and sisters.
No seek, no ride.
No seek, no ride.
What did we say? No seek, no ride. Yeah.
Sincerely, I am so glad. I did tears up. It shows that those kids, they have what it takes.
Even when the words not seem harsh or offensive, the impact is still shattering.
It's just amazing to see the things that she wants to do at this age, and I am so very proud of her.
Wait, each of us must come to realize that our impact always comes through.
If you can't fly, then run. If you can't run, then walk. If you can't walk, then crawl. But whatever you do, you have to keep on moving forward.
And so as I weep now is because I think back to what I saw, and they believed every word. And then to see them say, we're not finished yet.
But I'm not done yet.
And they said those eight affirmations.
I love myself, I believe in myself, I crown myself, I'm a genius. I can, I will, I must, and I got this.
And when I see that, I know there's hope for the future.
Very few people, this will be one of the first times people see what went on from October until that day. And that's what I want people to see.
Video recording here?
I don't think so.
No, they're doing that before the six.
Okay. All right.
Are you ready? Good evening. We're gonna call this meeting of the Lincoln Public Schools Board of Education to order. It's April 27, 2020 p.m. 20, excuse me, April 27, 2020, 5:30 p.m. Laura, would you please call the roll?
Ms. Byer?
Here.
Mr. Boswell?
Present.
Mrs. Danick?
Here.
Mrs. Duncan?
Here.
Mr. Mayhew?
Present.
Ms. Mumgarth?
Here.
Dr. Rowner?
Here.
Thank you. The Nebraska Open Meetings Act is posted between the two doors. Tonight, we are gathering for a closed session, and it is for contract negotiation, personnel, and legal advice. I would entertain a motion to do so. It's items one, six, and seven on your agenda. Bob?
Motion to move to closed session.
Barb?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that we recess until 6 p.m. Be here a little bit earlier than that, please, so we can start at 6. And go into closed session. Would you call the roll, please?
Ms. Byer?
Yes.
Mr. Boswell?
Yes.
Mrs. Duncan?
Yes.
Mr. Mayhew?
Yes.
Ms. Mumgarth?
Yes.
Dr. Rowner?
Yes.
Mrs. Danick?
Yes. And we will be down in Conference Room C in the lower level. We are in recess.
This fundraiser has raised more than $1 million over the last 10 or 12 years for feeding kids. Yeah, the Backpack Extra Mile Walk has been a huge fundraiser for the Food Bank for many years, and our partners at Lincoln Public Schools do a great job of helping us with most of the work.
The need has been growing over the last number of years. We look a lot at the LPS free and reduced lunch numbers. That always kind of gives us an indication of where the need is at within the LPS school system.
This year, we have to do it virtually because of the pandemic, so folks can donate online. But the Extra Mile Walk raises thousands and thousands of dollars for our child hunger programs, which include our backpack program, our food markets, these, you know, drive-through distributions that we're doing in the schools right now because of the pandemic. Our food pantry is in the schools. It supports all that work.
Well, with the pandemic unfortunately costing a lot of people jobs, we have seen our numbers greatly increase several different times. We would easily be serving 300, 400 people at each distribution every day here in Lincoln.
It is really important. You know, it's a pretty simple thing that we talk about all the time. Kids can't learn when they're hungry, so they really need this nutrition to, especially now with everything else that they're dealing with.
We work with the nutrition services at LPS for the backpack program, where we purchase food, fresh produce through them. So it's usually oranges, or apples, or pears. And every Friday, when we have the bags of dry goods that are going to be given to the kids with the backpacks, they put the fresh produce in on Fridays to send home to try to provide some more nutrition.
Our goal is $100,000, so we definitely need a little more help. But we really appreciate everyone who's given in all the schools, and the team captains, and administration, and everyone at the LPS district office that helps us raise all this money.
LPS allows us to reach a lot of families in our service area without their partnership, without them allowing us to come to the schools, partner with the schools, partner with other organizations to come into the schools. We want to be able to serve nearly the families we do.
We hope to be back outside next year for the real walk, but we'll do a virtual walk this year.
...of the Board of Education on Tuesday, April 27. Go down to approval of the minutes. Are there any discussions, questions? Seeing none, the minute stands approved as published. Tonight, we have a special presentation report and a celebration of success. Our first celebration is for the extra mile recognition and community service resolution. Dr. Standish.
Yes, Mrs. Danic, we just wanted to provide an update to the board and to the community on the Extra Mile Walk. It is unique and different, as you saw in the video this year. We are doing it throughout the week, so it's not too late. Go online. There's a banner on our website, and people can go for a walk, which is great. Exercise and fun this week. The weather's been beautiful. Go online and donate to the Food Bank for our virtual walk event, which is occurring this week. So now I'm going to have Scott Young just come up, maybe give a few words about the meaning of this program to the Food Bank, knowing that we don't have final results and school winners and things. I do want to comment Jess Jefferson, Kim Schmidt, and April Douglas in Business Affairs work with a network of school team captains all across the district to pull this off. And to them, we say a huge thank you.
Dr. Standish, thank you. Everything has turned upside down this year. Have you all noticed that? We had a little thing, a pandemic here. Dr. Joel, that came in. So the Food Bank has changed everything we do, and so has LPS. But you pushed through it, and we appreciate the decision-making that you've struggled with and arrived at, and we applaud you for all of it, because it's meant a lot to our programs and our organization and the children of the Lincoln Public Schools. Whenever we talk with you all, you talk about our kids. That's what this all is. So we're running the virtual walk. You can still get involved with it. Next year, we'll walk like crazy. I'll be a volunteer next year at the event, but I'll look forward to seeing you all there. Any questions about the LPS Extra Mile Walk that I can answer or ask?
And where do they find the donation? Is it on the Food Bank? Is it on LPS's website if they want to make a donation?
LPS.org or the Food Bank, lincolnfoodbank.org. It's on both websites.
Thank you, Mr. Young. And if you would just stay right there for a moment.
I will. You're tricking me now, ain't you?
No, we're honoring you. So for as long as I've been here, the Food Bank of Lincoln has been a great partnership. But under the direction of Scott Young, we have raised the bar. In the last year, I sat outside Huntington Elementary and watched our food service workers, our transportation workers, take the stuff from the Food Bank at Huntington Elementary for two hours, and the line just never quit. I just want you to know how much that is appreciated in a neighborhood that so needs to make sure food insecurity isn't touching their families. But really, it's about the connection that you've made with our community. And I am so impressed and so grateful. And so the board and the district has put together the following resolution, which one of my colleagues will move to action. It says, "Whereas Scott Young has always understood the direct connection between food security and a student's ability to learn. And whereas Scott Young has led efforts by the Food Bank of Lincoln to substantially expand efforts to connect students and families to meals over the past 20 years. And whereas Scott Young has proven himself to be a true servant leader, always putting the concerns and needs of colleagues and the community above his own. And whereas Scott Young is deeply respected in our community of Lincoln for volunteering his time and talent to a wide variety of organizations and causes. And whereas Scott Young has made an indelible impact on the lives of thousands of Lincoln community members and the families within Lincoln Public Schools. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Lincoln Board of Education does hereby honor and congratulate Scott Young for his years of service as Executive Director of the Food Bank of Lincoln." Signed by Kathy Danic and Dr. Joel.
Mrs. Danic, may I have a word or two with the board and be assembled strong here today?
Okay, but then you have to wait for our standing ovation.
Yeah, I'll wait on that. Thank you. This has meant so much to me, our partnership. The guys in the video, John Mayberry, who is here with us tonight, and Jason Heldren, neither of them are graduates of the Lincoln Public Schools, like their executive director, but they do a pretty good job anyway. But I think about Diana Pascoe at Clinton Elementary School, and Nancy Ganzer, who went to the Duncan family for seed money for the backpack program. 50 kids, 50 kids. Phil Sco, Marilyn Moore, Denny Van Horn. Those, Denny and Marilyn are both on our board right now. Sherry Steiskel and the Extra Mile Walk, who we couldn't have dreamed we'd be doing it like we're doing it. Scott Weeskamp, Mary K. Roth, Edith Zumwalt, the Independence Academy kids that are out at the Food Bank, packing every day. Deanne Kern, Beth Scott. Scott Schwartz, Susan Gorley and Sue Casada, who have said yes every time. Dr. Joel, Dr. Standish, Dr. Neal. All of you have said yes to our kids. The LPS pantry, student-parent vouchers. Kathy Danic's memorials for her mother, which meant so much to us and to the LPS pantry. Kim Schmidt and Jess Jefferson, who worked tirelessly on behalf of our kids. Dr. Van Price, who's on our board. Mindy Burbach. The list goes on and on. This has meant the world to me, and it's meant a transformational partnership to the Food Bank of Lincoln. Michaela Comkey, our next CEO, is here with us next to John. She'll be fabulous, and she will honor all the work that's been done and all the work that we're going to do going forward, and I'll help wherever I can. So thank you very much. I'm honored. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Young. And now, Mr. Boswell.
Mrs. Danic, I move that the board adopt the resolution that you just read.
Is there a second, Barb Byer?
A second.
So it moved in second to adopt the community service resolution honoring Scott Young, Executive Director of the Food Bank, for a couple more weeks. Thank you for your service. Well, you know, I try to keep the best of a good thing. Any other comments, discussion? Would you call the role, please, Ms. Maxwell?
Mr. Boswell.
Yes.
Mrs. Duncan.
Yes.
Mr. Mayhew.
Yes.
Ms. Mumgarth.
Yes.
Dr. Rowner.
Yes.
Ms. Byer.
Yes.
Mrs. Danic.
Yes. Moving on, we have a second celebration. It's a staff celebration. And Mr. Mayhew.
My dear board colleagues, I'm going to ask for a moment of indulgence while I express myself. On the agenda for tonight is an item for the evaluation of the superintendent. One of the hallmarks of a successful superintendent is the ability to put together an incredible executive team. On that metric, and on so many others, Dr. Joel has been superlative. He has built an incredible team. You can go through each member and look at that person and say, "This person is a rock star who will be a highly successful superintendent if they choose to do so." Tonight, we have the opportunity to acknowledge one of these incredible people. This year, the Nebraska Association of Business Officials has recognized what we have known for years. Dr. Liz Standish is simply the best. Holding an MBA and a PhD, she is fluent in the languages of finance and school administration. Her expertise and her fact-based delivery have caused many in the business community to describe her as a breath of fresh air when discussing education funding. As one of the very few people in the state who understands the state aid formula, Dr. Standish has become a valued resource for many in the legislature. And she is always aware that our North Star, the guiding principle for everything we do, is to do what's best for children. Dr. Standish, you have my highest personal and professional respect and gratitude for the work that you do for our children. It is with extreme pleasure that I read this motion, this proposal as a motion. Whereas Dr. Liz Standish has been honored with the 2021 Nebraska Association of School Business Officials Outstanding Business Official of the Year Award. And whereas Dr. Liz Standish has distinguished herself as a builder of people and programs that support the mission of Lincoln Public Schools. And whereas Dr. Liz Standish has demonstrated tremendous leadership during the pandemic, including in the development of the safety plan that allowed our schools to safely and successfully open their doors. And whereas Dr. Liz Standish has earned the trust and confidence of all who have the opportunity to work with her through her knowledge and expertise in school funding and legislation. And whereas Dr. Liz Standish is widely respected among her peers on the local, state, and national levels. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Lincoln Board of Education does hereby congratulate Dr. Liz Standish for being named the 2021 Nebraska Association of School Business Officials Outstanding Business Official of the Year. Signed, Board President Kathy Danic and Superintendent Steve Joel. Congratulations.
Just a few quick comments. I'm really honored to be recognized by the Nebraska Association of Business Officials. It's kind of an unknown commodity in education, but it's a network of really caring professionals on the operations and finance side of the school district. A huge thank you to the board for recognizing this honor. Thank you to the exec team, for the team that I get to work with to make everything possible, and the Business Affairs Leadership Team, a group of people who work just so tirelessly. I mean, we're all proud of their work that make, do all the heavy lifting and make what I do even possible. And then lastly, my family is here with me tonight, so.
Is there a second to the motion? Lanny?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to adopt the resolution honoring Dr. Liz Standish as the Outstanding Business Official of the Year. Comments? Connie?
Well, I think that we should have her family stand up for sure. So let's stand them up.
How about if we have her husband stand up? Annie?
Dr. Standish, you are one of the rare people who know numbers and humanity and put them together. And I think that's what makes you such a joy. I depend on you completely to translate me in so many ways. And it's just one of your many skills and you are rightly being honored here.
And before we vote, I just want to say, Dr. Standish, this district is very lucky to have you. You can take a budget that is this thick and explain it like it was that thick and leave us with an understanding of where we are and where we need to be as we try to balance the budget, which we do every single year. Thank you for your expertise in finance. Thank you for working with all of our schools. It can't be easy working with 50 different people and juggling all those balls in the air. But we are so proud of this district because they work together as a team and you're leading a fantastic team and I'm so very proud of you all. With that, Ms. Maxwell, would you call the roll?
Mrs. Duncan.
Yes.
Mr. Mayhew.
Yes.
Ms. Mumgarth.
Yes.
Dr. Rowner.
Yes.
Ms. Byer.
Yes.
Mr. Boswell.
Yes.
Mrs. Danick.
Yes. Moving on, we have an update from the Foundation for Lincoln Public Schools. And it's Wendy Van Del Castro.
Well, thank you so much. And what a great thing to follow. I don't think I can do that justice, but I'll tell you that award season is really an absolutely wonderful time of the year. And as I've gone around, we've given out 19 teacher awards this year. And for some reason, there's something about the awards this year that makes them just that much more special. The things that our educators have been asked to do and the work that they've done to make the impossible possible is clear and you can see it in the emotions of the teachers. We have yet to have a dry-eyed teacher award and that's rare because our teachers usually kind of try to keep it together. But this year, the teachers are so grateful to be recognized and we've really experienced that as we've gone out in the schools. We just finished with our Inspire Awards and we didn't let the pandemic get us down. So for this year, we just took it by storm. And 64 schools and programs participated in the Inspire Awards this year. You should see about 128 of these T-shirts around town. It says influential. And so if you see somebody in this T-shirt, you know that they're someone special. They have been identified by their principal as someone who really exemplifies the culture of that school and makes it possible so others can learn better. And so it was a real joy to be able to travel around the city and deliver those. We had volunteers that spread out across the city. And thanks to people like Allstate, Emeritus, and the Kimmel Foundation, we were also able to honor Clinton Elementary School as our Inspire School of the Year for their tremendous work that they've done in getting their reading and math scores higher and just creating a really dynamic environment for the kids at Clinton. I think my favorite story, I think of my tenure so far, is watching the little boy, the fifth grader at Clinton, get recognized as the Inspire winner in his school. He was completely speechless and darling. And you know, that's really what the Inspire Awards are about, is recognizing those that don't necessarily get all the accolades but make a big difference in their school. So that was a real treat. We have a lot of new funds at the foundation. It's been a really busy couple of months. We have four new scholarships, which means that, you know, hundreds of kids, because they're all endowed scholarships, hundreds of kids will be able to go to college thanks to some of our donors. We received a $50,000 gift from the St. Anthony's Foundation that allows five new schools to have emergency funds and support funds for their students that didn't have those before. And now more than ever, our families really need some support. We've had some really big gifts and it's exciting to see the Pat Campbell gift come to fruition at the Independence Academy as the Special Education Department looks at a renovation there to make learning independent skills more accessible for more kids by doing a whole bunch of upgrades to not only the appliances but the facility itself, so they're going to be able to double the capacity. And finally, I'll leave you with just a little bit of a teaser. The foundation board is working hard on a big strategic plan. And this strategic plan, we will be dreaming very, very, very big. And the scope of the next five years for the foundation includes everything from bricks and mortar projects to workforce development projects. And we are so excited to see what the next five years brings us and to come into even a deeper partnership and more alignment with our school district. Is there any questions?
Thank you for your work.
Thank you.
And now we are at item 7.4, the update on the pandemic plan and procedures. Dr. Joel?
Well, thank you, Mrs. Danick. And tonight is actually a good update, a positive update. The news on the virus and terms of transmission and numbers trending downward. The city of Lincoln's doing a great job. Public schools have been doing a great job. And heard the mayor today at the press conference, in which I was one of the guests that she had on, made mention of the fact that we're leading the state in terms of where our numbers are. So kudos to all of our community members and to our students and our parents, our staff. So we're feeling really good about that. We've had four high school clinics as of today and they're averaging about 200 students per clinic ballpark. Liz is in, yeah, she's in the room. She doesn't like when I estimate. So it's 500, more than 500 students have been vaccinated. We have two more clinics scheduled tomorrow. So we feel really good about that. And we're trying to get the word out to our students that it, we encourage them to take advantage of the clinics and get the vaccination. Because one of the questions that we continue to get on a daily basis multiple times, what is next year going to look like? And what I said at the press conference today is, it won't be a 600-page document pandemic plan, but it'll probably be a 60-page one because there's still an awful lot of unanswered questions that are out there. And we rely heavily on Lincoln Lancaster Health Department. CDC seems like they're coming out with different guidance on a pretty regular basis. But I think for the most part, it's safe to say that we're working our way towards some normalcy. And again, our schools have been safe. We've had low incidents, but we're not out of the woods. And so we need to make sure, at least for the rest of the school year and until further notice, that we continue doing the work that we're doing. The other questions, of course, come up about what about graduation? It looks like we're working right now with the Pinnacle Bank Arena. If you recall, we're going to do all of our graduate, high school graduations under one roof, of course, at different times. And we're going to, we think we're going to be able to increase capacity and we'll get the word out to parents of seniors and seniors as quickly as we can. We've increased capacity at sports activities, so we've got more people able to attend those. And so for the most part, we're, you know, we're really good shape. I have to tell you, though, you talk about moments. I was at Lincoln High yesterday and I was just observing how well the clinic was going with high school kids. And of course, you know, you get a chance to talk to high school students and one or two of them are a little nervous about this. But all of them, the rest of them seemed excited, but one young lady really touched my heart. I was talking to her and she was really thankful for it. And I was talking to her mom, who came to get her vaccine as well. The young lady had to interpret for the mother and basically said how grateful they were that there was access to a clinic. And, you know, I knew you'd want to hear that because that's the outreach that we're doing through this. But our numbers are excellent and, you know, our teacher response, our staff response has been wonderful. And we need to get more kids involved in getting vaccinated. And then we also, we're hopeful too, and Dr. Rowner might know more about this, that at some point this summer, the under 16 group will be included if those tests come back positively. So our hope is that as we go into summer pandemic 2021 planning, that we're going to be closer to normal. But I know everybody wants to know about masks and, you know, at this point, we're going to continue to wear masks through the end of this school year and we'll evaluate as part of our pandemic plan with the advice, as always, of the Lancaster, Lincoln Lancaster Health Department. So that concludes my report. Mrs. Danick?
Thank you, Dr. Joel. Questions? Seeing none, we'll move on. We're now at the time of the agenda for the public comment. I have two blue cards. When I call your name, please come forward to the microphone. Say your name for the record. And once you begin speaking, following your name, you will have five minutes. The first person whose blue card I have is Mr. Robert Way. Robert, would you please come forward?
Hello, my name is Robert Way. I come before you today with a question that is not, which is larger than a matter to be decided before the board in the next few minutes, well-considered and then decided next week, but has come to sort of a peak or a particular moment. We are considering an administrator salary contract which will be over $1 million for three years. That can be compared to the highest, second highest superintendent salary back in 2000, which was $128,000 in Grand Island. That number was found in the Grand Island Independent and it talked about how at that point, there had been a shortage of administrators because we'd seen a change in what was required of them. And so there was a difference in what we could expect, what we needed, basically, we need superintendents to do now as opposed to 20 years ago. Now we're 20 years later and it seems, based on the fact that I believe that LPS is a very good school system and I just saw a, I see, I think the term is associate superintendent, publicly recognized for being excellent at her job, that we have now created, we've raised a new generation of superintendents. If we've, over the past 20 years, corrected this deficiency in our pipeline, does it make sense now that we are looking at paying over twice the salary we paid 20 years ago for the same job? I assume that the superintendent is an extremely hardworking person who works much more than 40 hours a week, but I noticed that the proposed contract has two weeks paid off. So that would mean 50 hours a week, and I estimated it's probably low, that he works 60 hours a week. That still comes to $111 an hour. That isn't a lot of money compared to other people in this system who also provide very important work. I don't know, given the constraints on the school budget right now, if now is the time to cross that barrier where we're signing million-dollar contracts for personnel at LPS. I hope you will consider this and I hope you have a good night.
Thank you, Mr. Way. And our next speaker is Mr. Fred Myers. Mr. Myers, if you'd say your name for the record and once you begin speaking, you will have five minutes.
Good evening. My name is Fred Myers. I am basically a resident of Lincoln. Not from here originally. I want to start off by saying, LPS is a great school district. I've lived around the country through my 20 years of military service and I love the school districts here compared to everywhere else I've lived. In saying that, we need to wake up a little bit. I think our kids are having a lot more issues than a mask. And that's the concern I'm bringing up. Under 16, they're not even testing vaccines yet on kids. There's deaths, there's all kinds of other stuffs happening due to the pandemic that's not from the pandemic. Kids really need that interaction. They are, what, 0.2% of the total deaths of COVID out of the 3 million kids diagnosed with COVID, not the ones asymptomatic, not the ones that went, didn't have any signs of it. Only 271 died as of February. I'm not saying those 271, you know, died in vain, but wearing this every day, eight hours a day for kids is not right, not for a 0.009% chance of fatality. I really think, and I don't know, this is something you guys can decide, but this is something that you guys can talk to the mayor about. Kids under the age of 16 are not at risk and should not be accepted to this. They don't even know how to wear it, they fidget with it, they get it dirty. It's causing more issues than COVID. So I hope you take that into concern. Otherwise, I'll be running against you. You have a good evening.
Thank you, Mr. Myers. Is there anyone else that wishes to address the board? Moving on, we have before you the consent agenda. Human resources, routine business, option enrollment, and late requests for option enrollment out. Could I have a motion, please? Barb?
I so move. Approval.
Thank you. Lanny?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to adopt the consent items, human resource matters, routine business, option enrollment, student applications for 2021, 2022, and late requests for enrollment options out for 21, 22. Connie?
Conflict statement.
Please read.
Out of abundance of caution, I hereby declare a potential conflict of interest. I hereby abstain from voting on check number 649327 as part of Agenda Item 8.2A. And as to Agenda Item 8.2B, payroll for ratification as to any employee deductions for United Way in the agenda materials for this meeting, I vote in favor of all other consent items.
Thank you. Ms. Maxwell, would you please call the roll in noting Ms. Duncan's conflict statement?
Mr. Mayhew.
Yes.
Ms. Mumgarth.
Yes.
Dr. Rowner.
Yes.
Ms. Byer.
Yes.
Mr. Boswell.
Yes.
Mrs. Duncan.
Yes.
Mrs. Danick.
Yes. Items for first reading, action at the next meeting. I'm going to get to exciting things now. From board committees, the naming of a new elementary school. Connie Duncan, you are the chair of that committee.
I know and I'm so excited and I hope I don't cry or something, but if I do, I'm sorry. So tonight before us, for consideration on first reading, is a name for our new elementary school located near 102nd and Holdridge. A wonderful name. Ada Robinson was an amazing teacher at Clinton Elementary School. Ada Robinson was an amazing teacher at Clinton Elementary School. The stories from Mrs. Robinson's former students and community members reflected an educator who made connections to serve students and families well beyond the schoolhouse doors. The committee included myself as chair, Kathy Danic and Bob Rowner from the school board, and from the community. And if you are here, please stand. Lynn Ayers, Tony Merritt, Todd Ogden, Marco Petrosa, Kim Robach, Isma Valente, Malani Venay, Colette Yellowro. The committee followed the process outlined in board policy to solicit names from the community. More than 180 names were submitted by the community. The committee went through a process to narrow the list. We are fortunate to have so many well-deserving leaders in our community. Names that were brought forward include Ada Robinson, Leela Knox-Shanks, Barbara Alice Way, Nancy Becker, and Ruth Ann Wiley. Committee members prioritized their choice, and Ada Robinson rose to the top of the list. I will say that I saw 96 different emails and things about Ada Robinson. Definitely the winner there. I would like to thank my committee for their time and thoughtful conversations attending tonight, which looks like they may not be. Most important though, the most important person here is Ada Robinson, and I understand she's in the audience. Now Ada, if you cry, I'm going to cry, and I can tell you right now that Dr. Standish can cry more than anyone in this room, so she's next. So Tammy Soper, Ada's daughter, is here, plus many other family members. But we have Robert Edens, I might have pronounced it wrong, sorry, a former student with us this evening, and he would really like to share his thoughts. And so I'm asking him to come forward to read his letter.
First of all, I'd like to say you got the name right.
Woo! We're going back and forth, longy, shorty, longy. Gloria's husband, who is it?
German name. Thank you. Okay. Not really good at this, so work with me here. Thank you for this opportunity to speak before you and tell you the reason for suggesting the new elementary school to be named after my teacher, Ada Robinson. I first met Ada Robinson when I was in second grade at elementary, at Clinton Elementary. I remember her warm smile and her greeting us in the hallway. I wasn't one of her students yet, but I learned, but she learned my name. We moved yet again onto other schools in the district from McPhee to Park to Hawthorne to Randolph. Sixth grade, I came back to Clinton. Ada was my teacher. By sixth grade, the abuse, I was worse than ever that I had, or than it had ever been. I didn't have any physical marks to show I was an abused child, but abused nevertheless. I spent my life moving from one rundown property to the next, always waiting for the next eviction Never staying put very long. Those three-day eviction notices changes a child. You grab what you have to, but most of your stuff, your prized possessions are just gone. So there I was, a sixth grader at Clinton Elementary, back at least to a school I had been before, back to a person who knew my name. This isn't a unique story for the children of Clinton. My story is like many who come before me and still come to this day. The difference in my story is that Ada Robinson was my teacher. She saw through the ratty clothes, the uncombed hair, the worn-out shoes. She treated me as I belonged. We expected, or we expect a great education at LPS. This, but these educators need to do so much more than teach reading and writing. Sorry. This is exactly what Ada Robinson did that year. She taught me right where I was without judgment. She made me feel self-worth. She showed me respect and expected us to show her respect in return, or respect in return. I know it's hard to imagine, but my parents were not the show-up-at-teacher-conferences type of parents. Their goal was probably never to meet my teacher. This wasn't possible with Ada. She made herself known, even coming to my house for supper as she did with most of her students. I had never had a teacher in my home before. I had never had a teacher know my parents. She gave me a sort of self-confidence that could never be undone. School, for the first time, was a place I wanted to be, a place I knew I was safe, a place where they knew my name. It took me five more years to go to the police to report the abuse I was enduring, but without her in my mind, I would never, would have never been able to tell my story, to stop it for me and for my younger brother. Fast forward 12 years. My wife and I rent a little rundown house in Clinton neighborhood. My son is starting Clinton Elementary. We walk through the halls, and the memories of a time gone by come flooding back. Then I run into her, that teacher, the teacher. Ms. Robinson comes up to me and gives me a great big hug, calls me by name, and asks me about my life. She remembered me. Out of the hundreds of, hundreds of students through her door since I had been there, she remembered me, and she was proud of me. Ada Robinson was proud of me. A child with my background, that meant, that meant the world. She stayed, or we stayed in that little rundown house for years, refusing to move, making sure my children kept their prized possessions. When the time came that we could buy a home, we looked no place else than Clinton neighborhood, where my teacher was, where a few happy moments of my childhood existed. She knew each of my children's names, still knows them today, even though none of them were her, none of them were in her classes, and she was not their teacher. Ada, you will never know the extent that year meant to me. But this is why her name needs to be put on a building to tell the kids like me, we will remember your name, just as Ada remembered mine. My name is Robert Edens, and I'm a Lincoln High graduate, class of 1992, and thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Now, there really are no dry eyes in the whole audience. That is okay. We all cry very easy around here. Mrs. Robinson's daughter, Tammy, is here with us this evening. Tammy, would you like to say a few words or introduce some of your family members? We would love for you to do that. And if Ada would like to come up and say a few words, we would absolutely love that, but it is not a big deal. You don't have to.
This is my uncle, Ada's brother from Omaha, Charles Mullin.
Well, first of all, I want to say thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you for bringing this all out. My number one thing in my life was teaching young children. And I, and the children, we had time to laugh, play, and sometimes we had time to cry. But one thing about it, our days were full of good learning, listening, and following directions. And sometimes they would come to school and may not have the two shoes on right. Well, I knew in the neighborhood who I could go to and say, I draw his little feet on a piece of paper and everything, go take it to so-and-so, so-and-so, I need a pair of shoes, and things like that. We were not what we called just Clinton Elementary School. We was a Clinton community. We all got along, we looked after each other, we helped each other, and, you know, what else could you say about that area? It was one big family. We used to call ourselves the Clinton family. Anytime somebody new, moved in, we would be knocking on their doors, telling them who we are, what we do, and we are a family. So, thank you for letting me speak, so I could go on and on.
Tammy, will you introduce your family, please?
So, this is my uncle, my mom's brother, who lives in Omaha. She has a brother in Chicago and a sister in Chicago who couldn't be here today, COVID. And this is his wife, Paulette, so Charles and Paulette Mullin. This is my baby brother back there, but since he's bald, I feel like he's older now. So this is Mario Robinson, Sergeant Mario Robinson, Lake Police Department. And then I'll skip over, this is my significant other, Anthony Riley. And then in between there, we have a ton of other folks, I think, that are here with Robert and his family. Back here is Margaret Walker, who taught, was the principal at Lincoln, Clinton Elementary School for nine years with, with my mom, and just, how many? 14, did it say? She contacted, she was so excited, she contacted everyone she knew and said, tell them we need Ada. So she was so proud and was so glad she could be here. This is my family.
Thank you so much.
Well, Ms. Robinson, it is our honor and pleasure to name the new elementary school after you. Board, this will come before you next week for final approval. Thank you very much. I made it almost through, didn't I? Almost.
Are there any comments or questions from the rest of the board? Mrs. Robinson? She can't see me because she's behind the podium. I just want to say, when I was in Clinton Elementary and watched you back in 2001, Margaret Walker took me to your classroom. And what I see at Clinton, and my daughter also was a school psychologist at Clinton for a few years, so what I know is, the picture inside Clinton epitomizes what I believe good teaching is. A teacher with a smile on her face, an open heart, and children coming to learn. And I am so glad that this name has been selected for the new elementary school in northeast Lincoln. This comes back in two weeks, next board meeting. Thank you so much, and thank you all for being here.
Oh, it's wonderful.
Okay, we're moving, I'm sorry, I got to get my emotions. The next item is the evaluation and proposed compensation with the superintendent of schools. Board, you have before you, you all filled out your evaluation. I summarized it into a document with your pleasure. I will read it to you. The annual evaluation, I'll wait till we get the room clear. The annual evaluation of the superintendent is a statutory requirement of the Board of Education. It is our opportunity to review the status of the current year through feedback with board members using our board-adopted and Nebraska Department of Education-approved superintendent appraisal instruments. The six sections on this tool are as follows. Relationship with the board, community relations, superintendent-staff relationships, business and finance, personal and professional conduct, and leadership goals and job targets. Board members unanimously praised Dr. Joel's work to address a once-in-a-lifetime pandemic, social unrest, and keeping the focus on student learning. This tumultuous year was like no other, but the responsibility of providing education for our students is always at the forefront of our district under the leadership of Dr. Joel. The board established a goal that required the development and implementation of a pandemic operational plan where student learning safely and effectively and responding to evolving circumstances. Navigating this unprecedented pandemic while retooling education to provide family options, weekly meetings with the health, excuse me, with the Lincoln Lancaster County Health Department, dealing with budget stress and unforeseen expenses added to the regular responsibilities of leading a high-performing school district. Board members overwhelmingly noted the response to the lack of a playbook to deal with a pandemic and the understandable fear of staff. Leadership requires teamwork, focus, decision-making skills, and trust from the Lincoln Public Schools community. Board members noted the following, and I took three quotes from the evaluation. Don Mayhew noted, "In a most difficult year where there is no such thing as a playbook, Dr. Joel was simply incredible. I've had this through thought several times in the last 11 years, but I found myself thinking yet again, Dr. Joel was exactly the right leader at the right time to bring us through this situation successfully." Annie Mumgarth said, "The amount of teamwork, communication, decision-making skills, and sleepless nights that were needed to make our pandemic plan is beyond my comprehension. I only know that the plan that was developed and enacted has gotten students, teachers, staff, and parents through a most difficult year with learning happening and all kept in the best health possible." And Connie Duncan shared, "An amazing 600-page document, millions of Zoom meetings, and educating our students as much and at a high, as a high of level as we could in the classroom. Bravo." Additionally, the board adopted a goal to strengthen equity, diversity, and inclusion with Lincoln Public Schools and provide an update to the board on April 15 of 2021. On April 7, 2021, boardwork sessions detailed progress, which included work with the Midwest and Plains Equity Center. The creation of district-wide superintendent's equity advisory team noted as SEET, that currently has 12 members representing all facets of the district and led by Dr. Van Price. And the formation of a broad-based multicultural advisory task force that is chaired by Dr. Antoine Wilson. Discussion from the work session highlighted that this is not a destination, but a journey that will bring progress and work for years ahead. Overall, the board highlighted our solid relationship with Dr. Joel, which is built on trust, mutual goals, and shared values. He focused on the incredible and difficult work done each and every day by our building leadership, our teachers, and our certificated staff, including nurses, custodians, nutrition services, operations, every staff member dedicated to providing education to each and every child in Lincoln Public Schools. It's also about leadership and trust within our district. Dr. Joel's executive committee is top-notch. Many of us would say the best in the state of Nebraska. Their ability to directly respond to the known and unknown with professionalism, expertise, and heart is a credit to the strength of Lincoln Public Schools. It is one of the many reasons our community supports our public schools. It is about trust, transparency, transparency and engagement. The board recognizes and appreciates Dr. Joel's excellent work as our superintendent and thanks him for a successful year in overcoming unforeseen challenges while keeping the focus on the success of the students at Lincoln Public Schools. Respectfully submitted, Kathy Danic as your president. Is there any comments, questions? Dr. Joel, do you have any comments or questions?
No, the only thing I would say is, again,
No, the only thing I would say is, again, thank you so much for the feedback. And, you know, it's, and I know I speak for our executive team as well, you know, we always feel supported. We always feel as if we're doing the right thing for the right reasons. And your acknowledgement and community's acknowledgement of, you know, we're not going to get everything right all the time, but we're always going to put students at the center of every decision that we make. It's, this is a great place. This is a great place to be a part of. It's, we've got a tradition of excellence in education, and it's a destination location for staff members to come here. And it, a day doesn't go by where we don't feel as if we're appreciated and that we're doing work that's making a difference in the lives of each of our kids. And the good thing about the work is it's never-ending. And it's, you know, until we get to 100% graduation rate and every one of our students feels welcome and accepted, you know, there's always going to be more work to do. But this is a tremendous team of people that not only I get to work with every single day, but also in each of our buildings. And 7,500 to 8,000 employees that view the work as a mission and not just a job. But as Mrs. Danick talked and spoke, you know, trust is important, and it's what really happens here with us that sets the stage for the great work that takes place in our classrooms. And we do have a great reputation, and I thank you for that. And I thank you for your commitment to the evaluation process because the feedback is, is very important for us as we continue to craft, do our, do our best work in crafting a bright future for our students.
Thank you, Dr. Joel. The evaluation will come forward in two weeks for action. And we also have Dr. Joel's contract. The contract is before you, it has a 1.5% increase. Do I have that correct, Mr. Gessford? And it changes the salary to $334,515. Any questions, concerns about the contract? You've all had a chance to review it. It will come back in two weeks for your adoption. And according to state law, is posted for people to look at. Okay. Moving on. Our next item is the contracts for the associate superintendents. And Dr. Joel?
Yes, I, you know, I, at the risk of repeating, I, this is a talented, very, very talented group of people that last year, when we were facing the unknown budget concerns, offered to have their salaries frozen for a year and yet continued to work every bit as hard as they had in years past. And I think, I think their record speaks for themselves, and they're very, very valuable members of our executive team and certainly of the district. And this, the salary parameters, 1.51%, is within the guidelines of all of the other negotiation groups that we're working with.
Thank you. Questions, comments? All right, Barb?
Just want to take a moment to go and really thank the executive committee team and Dr. Joel, who leads this team. This has been a really, really rough year. I can only imagine how many hours you've put into this work, how you've sacrificed your own families and your own personal health. And you have my undying thanks for leading our community. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Barb. Any other comments, questions? All right, this will come back at the next board meeting for action. So we moved on, we have no items for second reading? I'm making sure I didn't miss anything. Oh, we do, no, forgot it. Sorry, I missed one. Tuition changes for 2021, 2022. Dr. Standish?
Yes, Mrs. Danick. Consistent with past practice, we use the finance and enrollment data from the school district and do a traditional calculation, similar every year, to create tuition amounts. This is the proposed tuition amounts. It will be back for you for second reading.
Thank you. And Dr. Standish, can you just tell people that we don't generally charge tuition? Can you tell them who pays this tuition when we put this in place?
So to give an example, if there is a student in the district on a special placement from another district outside of Lincoln Public Schools, we would charge tuition in that circumstance. So this would not be tuition for, like, a private school student taking classes in Lincoln Public Schools. There's no tuition charge for that. In fact, the reverse occurs. We do provide special education services in private schools. So this is someone who resides outside of Lincoln Public Schools and comes in traditionally for a special placement.
Thank you. Questions? All right, this will also be back at our next board meeting. Now, we have no items for second reading. No items from board committees, none from the superintendent. We have no items removed from the consent agenda or emergency items. Do we have any informational items or reports from the board, a board committee? About the Career Academy?
We do not.
Dr. Joel, do you have an update?
Just a really, really quick one, and that is that not very many more days of school left. So I don't. And in fact, if I can poke, poke a little fun at our students, when I walk around the schools and I asked, I was at East High School last week, and I asked just randomly a few kids how many days they have left, they all know. So my theory of kids wanting to continue to go to school, you know, to make up for the days they lost pandemic, doesn't hold any weight. So there's a, there's a general consensus that summer's around the corner. So we're getting close, and graduation, I think, is going to be, is going to be something spectacular this year. So we're looking forward to that. That concludes my report.
Thank you, Dr. Joel. We have the monthly financial report. Are there any questions or concerns? We have announcements for, from the upcoming board meeting. On May 3, we have the Lincoln Public Schools Retirement Celebrations at East High School at 5:30 and 7:00. You'll note that there are two different years being celebrated, and that's why we have two different times. We have on May 4, the African-American Participate to Graduate Scholar of the Year Virtual Celebration at 5:30 PM. On May 5, we have the Chamber Coffee at 8:00 AM virtually. And on May 11, we have a board meeting at 6:00 PM. Now, is the time in the agenda for a second opportunity for public comment? Is there anyone that wishes to address the board? And I do not have any other requests for closed session? Correct? If I can get my computer to move down. Let me just go back over here. And with that, this meeting is adjourned.